We'll call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for Wednesday, June 18th, 2014. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card, they're like this, and file it with the secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission, not to the audience. While the Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the orders of the chair. Could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Merk.
Here.
Vice Chair Foster.
Here.
Commissioners Lajowski.
Here.
Isabella.
Here.
Jagiello.
Here.
Nolan.
Here.
Nicklin.
Thank you. Mr. Jagiello, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, Public Communications is the time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at the time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. That's okay. Does anyone want to speak on an item that's not on the agenda tonight? Consent items. The consent calendar is approved by a roll call vote on one motion. Should any member of the commission wish to discuss or just approve an item, it must be removed from the consent calendar and considered as a separate item. We have one item on the consent calendar, which is the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, June 4th, 2014. Could we have a motion on the minutes?
I'll make a motion that we adopted the minutes.
Thank you.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Lajowski.
Aye.
Isabella.
Yes.
Jagiello.
Yes.
Vice Chair Foster.
Stand.
Chair Merk.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Nicklin.
Yes.
Okay, next is disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. Disclosure by commissioners of site visits and ex parte contacts for items on the agenda. I think we'll start at my left with Commissioner Nicklin. Any ex parte contacts?
I've visited the site.
I visited the site.
Commissioner Foster?
Yeah, I too am familiar with the site.
Yes, I visited the site.
I visited the site as well.
I have visited the site as well.
Thank you, and I rode by the site this evening on my way here. Next is the Municipal Advisory Council Planning Commission Liaison Report. The June 16th commission meeting has been canceled. The next MAC meeting is July 21st, and Commissioner Nicklin is scheduled to attend. So that brings us to our discussion items for the evening. First is item two, a concept review, CR 1401, for a nine-unit townhome development with luxury residential on the second floor and potential for workspace on the ground floor at 205, 209, and 211 North Signal Street in Ojai. Assessors' parcel numbers are 0210-1110-30, 120, and 100. The general plan use designation and zoning classification of the property is village mixed-use. Property owner is Bowie Hill LLC, and the representative is William Monat and Howard Silverman of Paradise Artists. So could we hear from staff on this, please?
Yes, good evening, commissioners. For you tonight is a concept review for proposed nine-unit townhome development with luxury residential units on the second floor and potential for workspace on the ground floor. In your staff report, I think that it's rather lengthy, and the amount of regulations that kind of layer into this proposal is kind of complex. So I wanted to kind of go through some of that a little bit for you, and then allow the applicant has a presentation he'd like to do to show his project, and then probably we want to revisit the regulations because of how they layer on this particular project. So as you know, the VMU, the Village Mixed Use Zone District, allows for projects to be unique and creative, and to do so, they use the planned development process, and I understand that that's something that hasn't been frequently used here in Ojai. And so I provided the regulations for you, and how your staff report is kind of laid out is, go through the general regulations, you'd find those on page three of nine, that talk about what the basic development standards are in the VMU. I have laid out what the findings that you need to make when you're looking at these projects. So for VMU, the context is new structures should employ materials, colors, textures, style, building mass, and scale that are compatible with the architectural character and form of the surrounding buildings as appropriate. There should be continuity. Buildings should be setback from the street consistent with a pattern of existing development located in the vicinity of the property. The scale, building form should maintain a human scale at the street and appropriate height transition to adjacent properties. And the architectural design, high-quality architectural design should be employed to avoid monotonous building elevations and create architectural interest. In specific regard to building mass, all projects shall be encouraged to stair-step elevations, such that each floor above the first is setback from the floor below it as depicted. And figure 1.1, I didn't include that figure, but it is in the code for you to reference. Uncovered decks and balconies may occupy the setback area for each floor above the first, and all openings on floors above the first that face a side yard should be designed so as to allow illumination while protecting privacy. As an alternative to stair-stepped elevations, projects may incorporate distinct architectural features such as towers, turrets, colonnades, that effectively compensate for a monoplane building surface. And each project shall be evaluated for compliance with the general plan policies that promote pedestrian or bicycle transportation modes and community interaction. So those are kind of your base goals that you're looking at when you're going to, at this concept plan, is you're going to be reviewing this in those, in the context of those goals, and then with the base district that is in the VMU. So, as I said before, the purpose of a planned development permit is to provide a means for encouraging creativity and innovative in development projects, and to afford maximum flexibility in site plan and property development while protecting the integrity and character of the city and ensuring consistency with the general plan. So with that, we kind of unfold, and now it starts to get complex as we layer all these regulations on top of one another. So on page six of nine, I went through the project as it is evaluated to base development standards, and you can really see that what it boils down to in this particular case is that the project is, as a whole, as all of the units on one lot, it meets the base districts. It's the individual cut lots within the envelope of the overall three parcels that then are asking for waivers. So each of the smaller parcels that will be subdivided to create an opportunity to sell the units, then becomes zero lot line on either side to one another. But as it relates to the properties adjacent to the borderline of this project, it is consistent. And the other, only other point that I'd like to really point out is, it gets down to the density. The density of this project when, for the VMU general plan district or designation is 4.4 units, and as you see, this project is proposing nine. Staff has had a couple of different conversations with the project proponent and discussed that the way to increase units or density is through the density bonus program, and we all know that that really amounts to providing some type of affordable unit in order to gain a density bonus. So I think that those are the, those are the real key elements of this project for you to look at is one, you know, is to the extent that benefits accrue to the community, the project should be allowed, or should the project be allowed to increase density, and if so, with a provision of what type of affordable housing units, at what rate, and then for how long. So with that, I think that I've provided for you the types in the table on page eight of nine, you know, the different formula that's allowed for increasing the density based on what type of level of affordable unit that we would be negotiating with the applicant if that were your choice. And I just want to point out that, that most of these things, if you read in the code and the regulations that I gave you, you know, they're, the city must provide it at minimum. So, you know, we get into this whole table about the density, and as far as what's allowed and what kind of bonus you'd be giving the applicant if you so chose. So with that, I think that, I just want to point out that they, you know, we encourage the applicant to come in early on, on this project, so he's very flexible in receiving comments back from you tonight. Because it is a very kind of out-of-the-box development, we felt that he should come in sooner than later, and he agreed with us. But as you noted, as he'll probably note in his presentation, he has been really receptive to all the ideas of including pedestrian, bicycle, and even the affordable housing elements. So I think there's nothing really off the table at this point for discussion, and with that, I'm open to any questions or concerns you might have about the regulations as I've laid them out for you tonight.
Thanks, Catherine. Do we have any questions for staff?
Thank you, I'm formulating them.
I'm ready.
Because this is a complex chart here, it's really hard to understand, actually, but it's probably simple if you look at it, it's long enough. So the way the lot is configured right now, it's, the maximum density is 4.4 units, correct? And in order to get to nine units, I'm just going to repeat some of the things you said, but you've got, you would have to then have a density bonus which is based on affordable housing quotas, right? Establishing affordable housing.
Right, it's, right, you have to have some provision of affordable housing.
Okay, some, all right.
Right. It all varies on the type that you're willing to grant, whether it's extremely low, low, whether it's a common interest proj, project, whether it's for restricted residents, which would be what we know commonly as adult, active adult, senior restricted.
How do we, how do we manage the, from the staff point of view, how do you manage the low-income housing aspect that they conform to or comply to it in the future? Is there a format for that?
Oh, you mean like in the long term?
Yes.
Yes, well, so usually, one, the property is indentured or restricted for 45 years, as was required in our code. So it goes from one property owner, one qualifying property owner, to the next property owner being qualified also. There are very strict formulas of how that's done. Every county is given by the state of California their median income for that county, and then it goes by that number of members in your family, and then across, and it goes up and down depending on the, the income bracket that you hit, whether it's extremely low, low, moderate.
So the, the low-income housing is based on the, the income of the family, not the price of the real estate itself?
Right, so when you're qualifying somebody, there's a, there's a mathematical equation that talks about, one, the amount of their income that can, that can go towards the housing, the housing, and then two, it's going to be the amount that they're financing times the rate of financing, you know, the amount the loan is going to be, and then it comes up with a payment, and that payment can't be above a certain percentage of their, of their gross income. It's just like anybody else. So every individual has their own, interest is a factor of risk, right? So depending on how risky the person is, then that floats with the individual. But generally speaking, in other communities where I've been, how you manage those from, from person to person or as a person is selling the unit, is either there's somebody in the city that monitors that, or we turn that over to someone in the county, like the housing authority of the county. Most of those organizations or agencies that are, that are really tasked with making sure that we have affordable housing and that it's not put at risk, take that very seriously. They require that the, the first time it's sold, whoever, whatever owner it is, or whatever agency is qualifying somebody, do, they do their due diligence to come up with the income and the ratios, and like I said, every year, you get these, the, the income that, that comes automatically. And then, you know, the city or the county, whether they're the managing agency for the city, then evaluates that, that work that's been done to make sure that this person is truly a qualified applicant.
So as I understand it, then the, the price for the sale of the unit then would be based on the income?
Right.
So there'd be some kind of subsidized funding of the project, because obviously they, that might be lower than the cost, you know?
Well, I think it's important.
How does that work?
I think it's important that, that you understand that, in the conversations, you know, that we have the applicant, that they understand that it's part of the overall cost of doing this project to get additional units. And like I said, they're proposed as luxury at the, at the one end, so it's really not something that we, if it were, as I, I would explain, that if, if we were financing part of it, if the city was actually financing part of it, we would get more involved if we were assisting. Like if it was a true affordable housing project, 100%, and we were offering up some kind of assistance, then we would look at their, their pro forma, and look at, see how things, how it was slated to go. But in this case, it's a private development, they're not asking for any assistance from the city to do the affordable housing project, or portion of the project. So it's really up to them to make sure that the all-encompassing project then is profitable for them. But obviously, they're, I believe they understand that affordable units would not be at the same market rate as everything else would be at, other than if you were to allow them to go to affordable, and what we call, or what the industry normally calls like workforce, or what some people call more affordable, you know, there's lots of euphemisms for why we say what we do, but that modern income, generally speaking, can be very close to market rate, and it's not highest and best, you know, like you wouldn't have a property getting bid up on, at whatever the going rate is, but it would be probably at more affordable for what we call working-class people, and, you know, it's generally referred to as like teachers and people, you know, and that, not what we typically think of as very low income, but still affordable in the, in the working, workforce classification. And, and that's very doable, and usually what's recommended from a staff's point of view when the unit is for sale, because it's very, there's two different types of provisions for affordable housing. One is for rent, and one is for sale. And when you're down in the extremely low level, or the, or lower level, it's more appropriate to try to assist those people with rental units than for sale, because the for sales, there's just too big a gap between what their income is, and then trying to fill that gap in order to get a purchase price down low enough for them. So generally speaking, with what the project that's proposed tonight, we would be looking to assist them more than likely in a moderate level.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, I have one more. And back to the chart. So if I'm understanding this correctly, if, let's just assume that it would be a unit at the moderate level or units, so column B would be the number of units that had to be at that level, or am I reading that wrong?
Um, no, that's the additional incentive.
Additional, on top of it.
Mm-hmm. So if we rat, in the city's code, it kind, in the density bonus section, it talks about rounding, and it says, you know, you round, any fraction rounds up. I know every city calls it out a little bit different. Most of us are usually, are used to, if it's 4.5, you round up to five, and it's under five, you round down. We know we can't build a half of a unit, but in this case, Ojai allows them to round up, so basically, they're entitled to five units. And so, looking at this table, probably the, the largest they would get would be three, and that would be for a total of eight.
Okay.
So the number, excuse me.
The number of additional units in column B, or additional incentives correlates to the number of additional units, and incentive.
Right.
Additional incentive is an additional unit, correct?
Right, right, exactly.
Based on the formulas.
And so just so you know, A is the percent above, the percent of units of the total project which are going to be indentured for affordable, but they don't count the density bonus units. So that's a little bit confusing, too. So we're talking about, so if he's saying he's got five units, and he's going to give you one affordable, then that one is X percentage of five, not X percentage of nine.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
So you actually see in this formula the possibility of doing nine units?
No, I think that, that they would be down around eight, but, but at the time that, that we were proposing, like I said, you know, it's very conceptual, the way they brought in. I encourage them, you know, without knowing the specifics about how this is going to be in the density bonus, my familiarity with the state law and density bonus was that it's usually a minimum, and then the city's allowed to move it up depending on how they see the project. And here, it's very specific that, although it's a little bit confusing, because in one section of the code, it says it's a minimum, and then they have this table that specifically spells it out. So what, looking at the table, subsequent to me meeting with him, it looks like eight's probably the largest that they could get, unless, unless they did, you know, I, well, yeah, I would say so. I don't know any other way that they could get it.
Sure.
I just have a comment that just from a real estate point of view, this doesn't make a lot of sense to me in terms of putting an affordable unit in with a luxury complex, and I don't, I don't see a moderate income level person really being able to get a mortgage for anything close to what it would have to be to make sense. So I'm just putting that out there for, to think that, we have to think all the way through to see how an affordable unit would work for them, so we don't end up with the property in foreclosure or some other problem.
Right.
Just to follow up on that, I have a question on page seven and nine in the discussion. Staff reports, option number three, so Commissioner, just saying, like, is this an option that to require 100% of the units be? Am I reading that correct? That if we're going to go for eight units?
No, um, no, that's just another option to grant a density bonus. You can grant a density bonus. Okay, so we're looking at the individual that they're trying to meet the needs of. A qualifying resident is a, is a, what is commonly known as a senior restricted facility. So if he were proposing a senior restricted facility, and he gave 100% of them, which kind of is, kind of is, is difficult to understand, so you could grant a density bonus. So if somebody came in and said, "I want to do a senior restricted facility, I'm going to do 40 units at a senior restricted, affordable level," they would have to have 100% of them in order to get more units, and he's not doing anything that's a qualifying resident. So like I said, I just tried to lay out all the options that he could have, and what, what the city allows for a density bonus, to give you an idea of, of when it occurs. It occurs when you do extremely low, low, moderate, senior, senior restricted, qualifying resident.
All right, other questions? Could we hear from the applicant? I'm looking forward to this.
Good evening, my name is Bill Monat, Bowie Hill, Paradise Artists. How are you? Good to see a lot of you again. Good evening. Okay, so I'll just give a, just, we'll be very expeditious with your time, and we're going to have good content here. I'm going to bring Isaac Hendricks, our architectural design, up, but I just want a few, just a few comments. Now, it was, we were before you, I think, a year ago, and for the Paradise Building, and I just wanted to see you quickly, so you have a before and after, because proof is in results. And so what, this is more or less a confidence builder with regards to putting, showing what thus far has been accomplished. So March 20th, 211, okay, I came back from London, I was calling on a Sunday, we had a tsunami rains. My neighbor said, "Quickly, come over." I came over. I wasn't feeling well after 11-hour flight, or what I call the long nap over the big And so, come on. World Cups on this one, by the way.
I guess.
Oh, here we go. See, all he had to do was stand up and he said, "Oh, oh, the boss is coming." So this is, this is a, this is our original building. It's actually close to 5,000 square feet. This is a 70-ton, 150-year-old tree that fell on the front during the rains. We did take every step we possibly could environmentally to try and make the tree survive. Paul Rogers, when he was still around and, and happening, he was, we consulted, and you know, we just, we done, came back redundantly relative to trying to save this tree, obviously. I think this is the last of the three that were in the downtown area. And my partner, it was a Sunday, thank God, this came right over my partner's desk, and Diana Franklin, my neighbor there, had called us, and she says, "You've got to come immediately." I said, "Okay." I came immediately. By that time, the first responders were, had already taken care of everything. Fire trucks here, we forget how good they are. Fire trucks here, police, police car in the middle. You see that red tape? They were already in, shut the electricity, the gas off, and made a search for the building in case I had any personnel in there. Awesome. Very impressive. I mean, when they get down to it, they really get down to it. Here's a, here's an in shot, side shot. This is right on, and Diana said, when it came down, there was a whoosh, and then she heard the crack of the wood. If it, if he was, if he was in there, he would have been sitting at the desk on the right-hand side, and that was the, that's what it looked like when, when it all broke So it was two and a half years negotiation with the insurance company, Mercury Insurance. And what happens when they, when they get large loss settlements, they put the dogs on you, and they put two of their top negotiators, because they didn't agree with the settlement that I want. Almost cost me my health, I have to, I have to tell you, because I had to become a student in insurance, and, and it's, it's very unpleasant, two and a half years later. Once, once we got the approval, we were on the same groove. We came in before you, I'm sure a couple of you may remember this, and came in, we got approval, and off we went. And as a result of, of your work and your inspiration, and again, this, this was about 5,000 square feet, that's, there it is. And that's, this is the inspiration from our, our planning and going. You can see we've got the handicap real, Larry did great job on that. That's, it's a very interesting facade, because it looks small-town, but yet that goes back, and it's nearly 5,000 square feet. It's tucked in nice, non-obtrusive setback, and looks really good, and that's what we ended up in. Thank you. Okay? And that's, to me, that's proof and result. Here, this is the corner unit duplex that's on there now. It's old, we do, it takes a lot of maintenance to, the back unit's empty currently, you know, comes and goes, and we make it very, very affordable, but it just, it's not, it's not quite up to snuff, in my opinion. Here's the, here's, there's a side there, no real garage, and we tried to, you know, freshly painted it, roof and everything, and it's, we're fighting a losing battle there. It's going, it's going to increasingly look dilapidated, no matter what I do, unless we put a large amount of capital in, and we're not. You know, we're doing the best we can with it to make it look as nice as it can. These three, there were three individual properties. We rolled them up years ago. One was a Doug Crawford, the empty lot we bought because Paradise Artists was growing, so we said, "Okay, you know, we've got to make sure we have enough parking relative to the size of our building," you know, so we didn't want you all coming back to us and saying, "Hey, shape up, boys." And so we bought the middle lot initially, and then we bought Doug Crawford, he decided to retire to Mexico, so we said, "Okay, let's grab that." And then, and then the Rains family, Mama Rains was getting old, and she sold us this one, and so we rolled up those three properties in a contiguous fashion, thinking, you know, at, at some point, we would be having this meeting, and, and, and roll it up. And again, we're, that's, that's, that's proof and results. That's the quality we're looking for. And, you know, this, I just wanted this to be a confidence builder relative to, we're not, we're not going to stand down relative to quality. We love our community and our town. So you can, you can depend upon us doing the right thing. Also, it was interesting, in the last planning meeting we were, when we were getting this done, is that I think someone from the planning committee said, "Well, what we're trying to do is we're trying to establish a boulevard," which I, I think is a brilliant idea, because we have, we have the arcade, and then where this is located, and then Sheila just remodeled her, her master suites at the spa back there. In fact, we were in construction at the same time, it's beautiful, and then we're going to get this and that. And, you know, I think- And, you know, I think it's gonna, it's gonna really turn out an excellent show. Now, this is the old Monte Grappa, they're in there. And what it, the difficulty with this building and the reason why it's gonna keep going in the fashion it is, it doesn't have the growth potential. Number one, it's affected by weather. That's a relatively small building in there and if the patio is not pleasant, people are not gonna come. And it's, it's too small. It's well-equipped, the compatrias originally remodeled it. And then Tammy and Stefano went, came in there and they just couldn't get it earning to what potential they want. And they subsequently moved to the arcade, which I don't know if you've eaten there, but it's great. You know, what can you say? And there's a, there's a side view, bocce ball court back there. And they did their best on it. It was, it was just something they, they couldn't proceed with. This is the empty lot here in between. We've done everything that we can do to mitigate it. In fact, Dick Wirick, our neighbor, has been just really good with it, you know, and in fact, called and said, "Come on, let's get some, let's get some dust down. Let's keep this dust down." And we did. And we worked to keep it down as much as possible, but, you know, again, you know. There's the other shot of it right there. That's the, that's a storage unit that's coming out this week. It was for our construction when we were doing the Paradise building. So, let's see what we got. That's where we want to go. And what we have there, we've, we've come off and it's inset, it's offset, again, pardon my, I'm not as knowledgeable as I should be on building, but I'm getting it. And, you know, our offset and inset of those buildings is, it's got more of a random opposed to just a facade. You know, we're going for the drought-resistant plants. And then in addition, we'll have solar on the top and we wanted to go to the European model and put all the parking behind. You know, we want to eliminate as much of this traffic as possible. And hey, I don't need your car. Park your car and walk on down. I walk it every weekend, you can see me down there. And, and going through the shops, I think it'll, it'll be a great benefit to the, to the retail, et cetera. The best example I could give is, you know, say a guy is, you know, at a point where, okay, he owns an insurance business, right? He wants to kick it back in, in Ojai. So he's gonna live in, live in top, work in the bottom. Could you imagine anything better? You know, and probably uses his car maybe twice a month, or if he has to go out of town. So that's the direction we're going. Let me just, let me address a couple of things. We're, we're open on the affordable. Look, we understand one thing. I don't, I believe, and I love the place, Santa Barbara made a mistake. And it's a mistake that you all are avoiding. And the mistake was, is they, they, they came in and there wasn't enough affordable housing inside the city. Well, you know, next comes another city next to them and you're, you're commuting. We're not about that. It's, what we want to do is we want to come to a balance where we can, we can take this project and also provide affordable housing. We're there. That's, you know, it's critical to us because, you know what? I want to live, quite frankly, I want to live among the people that are working in our community. Commute in. We, we, we have 16 employees at Paradise Artist, all local. Okay? So, you know, we're gonna provide those jobs locally. We want our citizens here, working here. Also, it lends to, it lends to one thing, is that the, they don't have that commute from Ventura or from Thousand Oaks or Santa Barbara, which, you know, makes a little bit longer-term employee. And we've got some really good ones. And so that's kind of, you know, that's, that's where we've, you know, we're coming from. And we want the affordable working, you know, and again, I'd like to just press you a little bit. We're going to, in order to make the project economically viable, we have to have, we have to have some opening relative to the density. That's all. I mean, help us out here. That's, I think it's a winner. Anyway, I would like to introduce you to our architectural designer and he'll run you through the floor plans and everything else. Take a look at it. He's, he's a very, very knowledgeable gentleman and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benat.
Yeah, hi, my name is Isaac Hendricks. And, yeah, so we designed this townhouse building to complement some of the other buildings in downtown Ojai. And a lot of architectural features and other details, we reused and implemented them. We didn't want the building itself to look like one big massive building. We wanted to break it up. So each townhouse had its own unique look, unique patio, unique floor plan, unique front yard. And so we just tried to play with that a little bit. And I think we came up with a really attractive-looking building. So this townhome has many features that kind of harmonize with the similar mixed-use development on 391 North Montgomery Street, which has very similar traditional Spanish-style architectural feel. Rod iron details, clay tile roofs, large patios on the second floor and decorative Spanish-style lighting as well. And I have photos of that. So the strip of photos on the top, that is that Montgomery Street building that I feel is really proof, good proof of concept, proving that our building fits within the same, has a similar articulation and very similar architectural features. And it is also a mixed-use building in the downtown area. So being in the location that it is, we feel that this project will promote the townhouse owners to, when they come home from work, they have guests over, you know, they can park their bike, they can, you know, store their car and they're able to walk. You know, there's bike paths, there's trails. You know, there's, go down to the farmer's market on a Sunday or go to Libby Bowl for a concert or also go out for dining or shopping down in the arcade. We feel that this project will be financially beneficial to the surrounding businesses. And here's our site plan, shows the overall building footprint. And as Bill mentioned earlier, we want to use California drought-tolerant plants throughout the whole site. So we got, right now, it's just conceptual, but we want to have, use agaves, rosemary, varieties of succulents. And then there's this really cool drought-tolerant grass that we found, it's called zoysa grass, which grows really well and it's supposed to be fine with frost. And where the private driveways are, we're gonna do a combination of pavers in the zoysa grass. As you can see in the green image in the lower left-hand corner, there's a photo of kind of what we're going for. And there is, there's three existing oak trees on the site that we're gonna be able to keep. There's one 48-inch diameter oak tree that we, we're gonna have to remove. But we will replace the equivalent of oak trees. So we're gonna add two 24-inch diameter oak trees on the site. And that's depicted on the site plan as well. Yeah, and like Bill said as well, we're open to doing the two units of senior affordable housing. And we're open to having a nice common bike lock area, probably in the back next to that other existing oak tree in the middle of the parking area. And we're willing to compromise with you guys and just, we're happy to meet with you today and get your input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So do commissioners have any questions for the owner and his representative?
What's the price point that you're projecting for your regular units versus your affordable units?
You know, I'm gonna go ahead and say it. In a lot, a lot of the luxury suites like this, we were advised by, by numerous real estate agents that we should keep this between 1.2 and 1.5. You know, you start, you start dancing these things up and, and here, could you get the square footage? Let us show you the square footage on this. In other words, we don't, we don't want, we don't want to go out of the price group here. And, and, and there's, there's our, yeah. And there's our, there's our square footage right there. You know, and it's moderate. And we want to keep the price moderate. If, you know, 1.2 or 1.5 is moderate, you know, it is in today's standards. And it's most certainly in Ojai. And particularly after you put all those nice, nice streets in just recently, signal's looking pretty good.
So, so you must've calculated out then what you would be priced, how you would be pricing the affordable units?
Yeah, but what, what we really wanted to do was we wanted to get, you know, get a planning position and then we can get into budget. You know, and we can't definitively say, you know, until it's your decision, what we can do budget-wise. I mean, that's, that's critical. Once you say, "Okay, you know, give us a wink and nod, let us go at it" and then, and see if we can make it work relative to what you're going to allow with regards to the numbers. The, you know, with the, with the affordable, it's, I, and we wanted to go senior affordable housing or affordable housing for seniors. And, you know, we got to arrive at a price point there and is this run by the housing? You know, I mean, so, you know, I got to get a little bit more educated on that to see if, you know, how our numbers are gonna flush out with regards to that. And, you know, I think, I think that's really the key issue. We were, we were hoping to get approval on the nine. We'll push two affordable over. We think we can make the budget numbers work based upon that after we get through contracting going there.
Do you feel like you're gonna have an issue trying to sell a million-five townhouse next to something that's priced substantially lower in order to?
Uh, no, because we're not, we're not going to, we're not gonna vary from the quality. And it is a concession, no question about it, but we're not, I, I maintain that we can, we can put these in and we can design it properly where it has integrity and we have no interest in building a ghetto.
Yeah, that's, that's not exactly my concern. My concern is more, do you, are you concerned that a buyer for a million-three or four or five-dollar property is gonna have an issue with somebody who has an adjacent property that's priced substantially lower?
When, when I, this was born from the idea when I, when I saw the Montgomery properties. And asking the owner the same thing, and I went through all of them. No. I don't, I don't think the, there's an issue if it's done right. In fact, I wouldn't, being there, I wouldn't mind have a, have a senior next door to me and do some hangtime.
I had a question for Kathleen again. So the density bonus units are only granted for low-income housing. Do we as the city of Ojai have any discretion over that? Can we give density bonus units away without conforming to the particular state law that you quoted before? I mean, are we, is there any discretion allowed?
No.
No, none.
Are you, are you, I'm a little confused. Are you saying that based on what he just presented?
No, no, based on, but what you said earlier.
No, the density bonus under state law is for, it's too, it's-
It's a fixed formula.
Well, it's not, it's not, I think every city has, has a certain leeway in how they implement state law, but density bonus under state law is specifically meant for affordable housing. It's an incentive program.
Right, and we have to conform to those regulations in order to offer density bonus.
Right, and like I said, I might've been a little bit confusing on that, on that chart that I gave you, but under the density bonus program, you are allowed a density bonus and incentives. So they go hand in hand. I didn't get into the incentives and that's what the numbers were on the side. I misspoke when I said earlier the incentives because he's, they're also, also applying for a planned development permit, which allows incentives. So in this case, it's kind of like it's a, it's double, and I tried to keep it simplistic and not confuse it even more. But in order to incentivize affordable housing, the state also grants incentives.
Right, so it would, like, for instance, going from 4.4 to eight, which you've outlined in your program here on moderate income, to go to nine, would that fall under that category? Could we, can we give them authority to do nine units?
I'd have to really look into that. I'm not, I'm not really sure. I mean, at some point, this table stops at 40%. So, you know, they have 4.4 units and he's offering two, that's probably at 40% and then that's 35% of, of, of the density of eight per acre. I don't know, I don't think, in reading it, I didn't see anything where you could grant an additional one, but I would, I would have to look into that a little bit more. If that was something, I mean, truly something that you wanted to do. This, this section of the code also provides this housing trust fund section where it talks about establishing a fund to pay all housing and lieu fees. But I couldn't really see, I could never find any connection between housing and lieu fees. So say there was a real concern about him providing affordable housing on this site and incongruent, or it being not congruent with the other units. In some cities, they allow a person to pay the in lieu fee and then, and then allow the units to be built someplace else. I see where we have added this as of 2013, the housing trust fund and lieu fee, but I don't see any application of it. So I believe all these units that he's talking about here have to be built on site. But if you guys really like the concept and you wanted me to look into it, I'd be happy to look further into that. One, either is there a potential for him to pay for units to be built by a different developer somewhere else? And two, you know, if there's a potential for him to go up to nine units. The way I see it right now, given what's in the code, I think his potential is eight.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And let me add, on that alternative, that would also speak to what you were saying as well. If we could stay on, stay on message relative to the overall development, I think, I think that would be a great idea if we, you know, go, I wouldn't mind going off-site and developing that in a, in a form of a trust count and do that. Because I think then we're gonna, we're gonna be able to throttle two areas of our community and pick that up. I mean, I think that's a great idea. Let us, let us complete that and go off-site and, and make the obligation to develop that and further, further move this, the whole big picture off the dime. I think it's a great idea.
You also mentioned, or I read somewhere, the live-work, work-live concept. Have you, are you incorporating that into your project at all? I can't tell by the elevations.
Yes. Yeah, each unit is gonna have a minimum of 500 square foot for a commercial, or a private office. Thinking maybe like some, perhaps, you know, a lawyer or a designer or somebody that, maybe just somebody that does crafts. So they have their own private little office. And that would be located on the downstairs. And we, I haven't further developed the floor plans yet because it's all just kind of conceptual. But we have some really good ideas though, on how to make that work and how to make it really usable. So, yeah, they're all, all of the units, I see, one through seven would all be the mixed use. And then eight and nine would be the senior, moderate, affordable units.
Have you made any contact with, I assume it's Golden State Water who provides the water there? Would they provide a can and will serve for nine units?
Yes, yes, they could.
And the Ojai sanitary district would also?
Yeah, and, and we've, we've just had initial, it's one of those, "We okay? Yeah, you're okay?" And discussing, I'm sure there's gonna have to be some modification there. Obviously with the recent Maine breaks, makes us a little nervous about what's going on. But I think, you know, I have faith in our water district and Golden West that, you know, because my, my home property's on Golden West too and so is our office. And, you know, if they're still in charge, large and in charge, we don't, you know, there's a little question there, but I think we're okay. And most certainly, I'd like to go back, that's an excellent question. I'd like to go back for verifiable and we don't want to do anything until we get the decision.
Other questions? All right, well, thank you. And we're gonna hear from the public now and then we'll come back and this is a concept review, so we'll kind of go around the table and let you know our thoughts on everything, so. So this is a public hearing and I have a number of speakers' cards. And the first one is for Bill Wirick. Your name just floated up to the top.
First in, first out. On, first off, on the sanitary district, I believe their ordinance requires- On, first off, on the sanitary district, I believe their ordinance requires a separate lateral for each parcel. And I'm kind of was wondering how that would be laid out, the way some of these parcels are going to be divided up. That's my understanding is you require a separate lateral and each property owner in the nine parcels would be responsible for that lateral. The other thing, hm?
For metering, yeah.
Well, it's per, for their ordinance, you know, for the sanitary district. Plus, I believe this would be entirely fire sprinkled.
Yes.
And so you'd have to do flow tests on each of the nine and there'd have to be separate, you'd be coming off each separate meter from Golden State. And we know there's some issues there. So I just, you know. I have some questions and I'm, and I'm not, that's really where I, that, those are the kind of questions I have. I don't really have an opinion, but I, I do have some questions. And some of them start with parking. I noticed that on the parking chart, there was a listing of the nine, to start out with the nine guest park. And I noticed that two of those nine are tandem. In other words, may I point those out?
Okay.
Okay.
You have seven across the back and these two are in front of the two-car garage. So two of the nine that are shown are the guest parking or tandem parking.
I think that's just a question. I didn't know how that fits in with various regulations. And I guess it's part of the parking, is part of the design review, I believe, in the VMU. So that's one thing I just wanted to ask and point out. The other is that the guest parking in the back are parallel parking. And I just looked up a couple of standards on that and I'm glad that, that this gentleman's here, whoever can ask my, answer my question. My understanding is that parallel parking spaces are supposed to be nine and a half feet wide and that the aisle width for a 90-degree exit-
Say coming out of here, these go up either, and here comes with the, the parallel parking behind them.
I believe the aisle width is 24 feet, at least in the standards that I looked up for making sure you have room to back up and back in when there's a car there. And I did a quick calc on that based on this design. I believe that the clearance is only 18 feet. So I have a question about whether there really is sufficient room to realistically have parallel guest parking back there behind the two-car garages, whether there's really room to, to back in and back out, based on at least the, the published standards that I saw. On the issue also of parking, I, I noticed something in the code, Kathleen Walden, and this article references Article 14 for parking standards. And there's something in their code about not being, for, if it's residential, you can't use more than a certain percentage, I think it's 40% of a front yard for access driveways. And if it's non-residential, the development standard is that non-residential shall not be located within a required front setback area. So again, I was curious about these two, which I believe this is one parcel right here. That's got to be the front yard even though it's labeled personal driveway. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I, that's just a question I have regarding the whole parking situation. And then the other final comment I'd just like to make on the parking situation is to, is where does the 12 number come in, in the off-street available parking? There's a, in the chart in here, in the staff report, it mentions 12 off-street. And I, I noticed that we're increasing the curb cuts from the existing, so that the increasing curb cuts would take away from existing street parking. And where does the 12 come in? I'm not sure where. First of all, off-street, street parking isn't allocated to anybody. So where does the 12 available street parking come in? And this area can get kind of congested and my concern is that if there is in fact live-work units in the front, presumably, and again, a question I have, because the design's very attractive, but I do have a question on that practical basis. If you're entering from the front and the guest parking's not really practical in the back, are you really saying that all of your clients would have to street park? And that's where the number 12 becomes relevant, just because it doesn't look like there's any, may, may not be any real available off-street units for the live-work support. And my final question, again, just questions is, did I understand that no matter how much the fraction, how small the fraction is, you round up? So if it's 4.001, you go to five? You said no matter how small the fraction, you round up. And is that by ordinance or by city policy? Just a question.
Jump right in there, Kathleen.
And I, I don't mean to, I know it's my, I don't, can't demand answers, I just, just questions I have.
No, it came out as 4.4 and I think it got-
Yeah, I, I know it was 4.4, but I heard her say that no matter how small the fraction was, you rounded up.
Well, let me, um-
But technically to me, I mean, you could have 4.001 and you go five.
Yeah, let me find that for you, okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Bill, I had a question for you while you were up there. I just wanted to know, are you okay with this kind of density in, in this area of the town? I'm just curious about your opinion of it.
Well, it is an increased density from anything else in the, in the area.
Nothing there right now.
And, and I'm coming at my major concerns on, on the parking issue frankly.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, because I, I looked at that and I looked at those guest parks and I thought of the live-work and I said, you know, you're really going to have someone park in the back where they might get hit by a car coming out of the garage? And are we really talking about tandem parking? That's my major concern.
Great, thank you.
Okay, you ready for my?
Sure.
Okay, in the code it says, uh, density bonus calculations, this has to do with just density bonus, not in general. It says, "When calculating the number of permitted density bonus units, any fraction of units shall be rounded up to the next whole integer." And I just think most people are used to the idea of the five being the breaking point. That was the only reason that I brought it up.
Thank you. Uh, the next card I have is for Bill Miley. Mr. Miley, you ready to? You're always ready to talk.
Good morning, good morning. Good evening, planning commissioners. I'm Bill Miley. I live at 919 North Signal Street. I think many of you know that I've been active in working on housing element plans for many years, 10 years plus, and have been active involved, actively involved in a committee that we formed a couple of years ago called the Ojai Affordable Housing Committee. So I'm here for two reasons. And I would like to, to, just to compliment Mr. Minot on the architectural structure of the building. It looks really great. And it was sad to see the condition of the building after that big tree fell on it. I'm glad that nobody got hurt. And I think it's a really nice name. I, I like your sign outside, the Paradise Artist. Until I knew what you did, I thought maybe you painted inside or something like that. Anyway. I too had a question about rounding up, as to whether this was decided by ordinance or it was a case of over the years, it just happened. So I would like to know, maybe, I didn't hear what Ms. Wald said, so maybe I would like to see that answered later on more specifically. My second question was already answered by Mr. Minot. When he talked about the possible market price range of the townhouses from 1.2 to 1.5. I would like to, then my third point would be, since one of the criteria was that the project would meet the general plan and all of the parts in the general plan. And as you well know, that the housing element is the one plan in there that has state law behind it. And the housing element does talk about affording, the need for affordable housing and it's built into the plan. So I'm really pleased to know that that's being discussed in more than just casual ways. It's kind of neat, okay. Number four item is that there is a need, as you well know, for a variety of affordable housing units in Ojai for different levels of income. And in this particular project, we're talking about, Ms. Wald's talking about, and we're talking about moderate income, which is a really good idea. But when it comes down to the type of unit for sale versus rental, we've seen over the years and we have as our priority, rental units, not for-sale units. And if you've recently looked at the Attachment D, which is in the housing element, affordable housing terminology, and current affordable housing limits on prices and such, you probably have that. And I'll just read you a couple of these. Under moderate income, if it was a two-bedroom and it was for sale, the maximum price that could be asked for that unit in order to make it available to a moderate income group, family, would be $367,000. And that won't work for low-income folks. You could get 367, and the cost would be, and your market rate would be 1.2.
Well, it brings, it brings up an interesting conversation, particularly the, the option that Ms. Wald put forth.
Yeah, that's my next point.
Particularly what you're, you're involved with, because I, I think there's an opportunity to, to, if I may, serve both, both needs relative to that, where we, we could, we could also come off, come off property to, you know, because I, I believe in what you're doing. I know what you're doing and I believe in what you're doing.
Good, good.
And we need more of that. I, I, you know, we've, we've watched over the years, Santa Barbara turn into unaffordable housing for moderate and lower income. So I'm right there with you.
City come up?
Oh, I'll just do it from over here. Go ahead and address your comments to the mic because the audience can't hear Bill's response because he's not at the mic.
On the cable.
So the dialogue, you might not be able to hear.
Oh, my apologies, I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, I agree with Mr. Minot. That's a really great idea. And that was my next point, that the in-lu housing trust fund that Ms. Wald brought up was a really good suggestion. And I was very pleased to hear Mr. Minot originally say what he said and just now. And I hope that that will be looked at in a very active way by your planning commission to make that potentially happen. And this would then help meet our interests and needs and those of other folks to turn this into a rental affordable project off-site rather than a for-sale. And that would meet lots of needs. The project applicant's needs, the city's housing element needs, a lot of us who are concerned about affordable housing for folks, and a number of folks who are currently living in the city and paying a lot for rent based on their income, and people who are traveling here from other places because they can't afford to live here and working here, and they can move here. So, gee, lots of people will get their needs met, so thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I have a card here from Dick Wirek.
Good evening. My name is Dick Wirek and I live at 12078 Linda Flora. And I represent the owners of the Signal Office Building across the street. And my wife and I own the house that's neighboring on 107 East Eliso. So we have a, a great interest in what's going on in that corner. I have a couple of comments. I think the design looks great. It, the, I appreciate the setback design on the, on our property line. It's setback, the upper stories are setback, so there's, there's visually more, more sky space to look at from our property. And that's, that's welcomed. The, um, one thing on the design I saw that wasn't right is that they, there's no sidewalks shown on Eliso. And there's no sidewalk there now, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't have one. And we still have people parking on Eliso to go to the farmer's market and they have to walk in the street there. So I think it's important that, that we do show sidewalks on both sides, especially on Eliso. And lastly, my main concern is, as my son said, the parking. I, I would request that there be no reduction in the, in the requirements for parking be, be allowed. And I do see some guest parking, but as Bill, Bill said, it's, it's tight and there would be, could be problems there. And lastly, on traffic, the corner of Eliso and Signal is, is a high-traffic area and I, all the time hear cars bumping out there. And I'm sure the police should voice the show the frequency, but there's a lot of close calls also. And so I, I did check that the, there's a 25-foot diagonal across the corner there which seems to be met, which is good. I believe it's, it's, it meets it on the setback. But there's still cars biking out and there's traffic increases along Signal, which I think you should consider recommending, or someone should consider recommending a stop sign on Signal to, to stop the traffic coming down and up there, because it, it gets pretty fast. And we, I think it's a potential problem there if we don't have a stop sign installed because of this project on Signal Street. And I, other than that, it's a beautiful project, meets some of the housing needs and I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wirek. I know what you mean about the traffic on that corner, because I ride my bike down Eliso and it, for some reason, people come flying down Signal Street and it's, you really have to just stop and make sure. Anyway, my last card here is for Judy Murphy.
Hi, I'm Judy Murphy and I live at 218 Grand in Ojai. Actually, most of the points that I wanted to make have already been covered. You'll be happy to hear. One small detail, you've mentioned that it would be affordable for seniors. And when I look at that floor plan, I see a lot of stairs. And typically, seniors aren't buying into stairs. I really also liked the idea of going off-site so that we could do rentals, 100% affordable rentals. That's what we really need in this town. I also agree that it's a very attractive unit, units. It does feel a little dense. It feels a little overwhelming for just three lots, rather small lots at that. But I like their approach. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. I don't have any other speakers' cards, but is there anyone else that would like to speak on this? All right. I don't think we have to close the public hearing because it's a concept review. Typically, what we do now is we just kind of go around the table and commissioners can voice their opinions about this. So I think I'll start at my left over here with Commissioner Nicklin.
As far as the project is concerned, I think it's, it's going to be a lovely addition to the city. But again, I do have some issues. The, the parking issue is something that is a very important issue. Actually, parking in downtown Ojai is at a premium. We're business owners in downtown Ojai and we find that parking's always an issue, especially certain days of the week, Sundays, Saturdays. And as Mr. Wirek brought up, if it's work, live-work and you have clients coming to your business, they're going to need to park somewhere. So, you know, the parking is a definite issue. You know, if this was to be granted, I would be very pro the off-site, off-site affordable parking, at, at least housing rentals, 100% as it was brought up here now would be a, an option. You know, granting the, the density bonus. And just let me see my notes here. The, um, yeah, that was all I had actually. That's just my points.
Thank you, Lance. Kathy?
Yeah, there's portions of the project that I think you've, you know, well done. You, I mean, you obviously, you know, went through the guidelines and you met all the setbacks and what have you. and what have you. Some of the concerns that I had were also the parking issue. As Chair of our Complete Streets Subcommittee, that intersection of Eliso and Signal has come up numerous times about how to address it. It is a very dangerous intersection, so having more parking, you know, more people accessing the buildings there could be an issue. Also, I'm almost sure that a sidewalk would be required on Eliso as it's within our downtown core and walkable community space. Some other things I looked at, and I know this was mentioned by Judy, I believe, and it had to do with density. And yes, there are two-story buildings adjacent to this project, you know, the apartment buildings, and of course, the professional building across the street. But what I was really looking at in downtown Ojai is we tend to have a mix of maybe, there's a two-story building, and then there's one-story buildings. So, not, I almost felt that over-dense, I hate to use the word feeling, but, or experience, but that's what I was picking up from the project, that it's just, we do want density, we do want more housing downtown, not opposed to that, but I felt like if it was maybe a mix of one and two-story, and then, of course, not the nine units. Also, was concerned about the oak tree being taken out, and maybe that would end up staying if the sidewalk went in. A couple of other things would be to use permeable paving rather than solid concrete in your parking area. You didn't really give us much of a sample on your planting palette, so it's kind of a little hard to comment on that, other than I did have a question about, it says new peat moss and pavers, and I wasn't sure what you meant by that. So, that's a question that I had. Got the permeable paving, the oak. Let me, I'm just trying to look and see if there was anything else. Oh, I did have another question, and it had to do with the architecture. You know, I really appreciate the setback so that the actual front of the building doesn't have like a solid, continuous mass. But the question I had was at least from the color rendering, is the tile roof going to vary, or is that going to be one, I mean, each unit's going to have its own identifiable color palette, material palette, so they would shift? And it's interesting, you know, it's not that I'm opposed to that, but I'm wondering if just a little more continuity would, might help tone down the density. Just a comment. And as far as the fencing in the front, I could, you may consider not wanting to have the fencing in the front, especially if you were trying to create more of a public space and have it feeling a little more inviting. So, that was another issue. And I think, I think that's it for the moment.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Foster.
I, you know, this is Zoned VMU, and if, when I look at the location of this parcel, I see it as being very integrated to the downtown area. And it's really ideally set up for the VMU concept of having, integrating business and residential. My fear is that it becomes all residential. And how do we, you know, have some sense of control over that? And we've seen it happen in projects here in the community quite often. But I think what makes this parcel particularly adapting well to VMU is its location. There's businesses across the street, there's on all four corners, so it's ideal to bring in this sense of opportunity, you know, on an economic basis in terms of business, and also on a social vitality, too, because if you can integrate the live-work concept together in a downtown area, I think you've, that would be a successful project for me. What I would, don't want to see is like one project, one of the nine units, or whatever the model is, just become the VMU unit. So, to that end, I think it's important that architecturally, and typically, you know, the lower floors are designed in such a way to be conducive to the business aspect of it. That could be, and that can be achieved in a variety of ways, as you know. Typically, glass, the way the landscape is arranged, access to it, all these things become very, very important. And so, I want to, I want to, I want to see people walking up and down that avenue, you know, that street. I don't want to see people driving by parking there to walk up to the, you know, just as an apartment. I think the vitality of this, and the potential of this project lends itself, really ideally, to that combination. So, I'm looking really hard at that. You know, in terms of addressing the parking, I think you could go with the rear parking if you provided access from the rear all the way to the front. And maybe, what I'm not seeing here is because, the way the footprint lays out, there's a lot of density. I think it needs to open up. Maybe it goes into two, I mean, I'm just throwing out my brainstorming with you guys, but my thought is, we need some sort of courtyard or more public plaza, some way to access the front from the back that would then enable you to use that parking in the rear, because right now, it is isolated and it doesn't work. What would happen is people are going to be parking on the street, and probably, a lot of those people are going to be not using it for business purposes, it's because they're visiting or whatever. So, it's important to get this connectivity thing going, going on, in terms of vehicular connectivity, and also pedestrian connectivity. So, I think the concept of, you know, you know, a courtyard plaza, something that allows the public to really interface with this project is really important. I like Mr. Wirek's idea of the sidewalk. We got to have, we got, again, that ties into the circulation on Eliso. We got to have something going on in that. Where do the bicycles go? I mean, here you're downtown, people are going to be walking, and hopefully, they're not going to be driving as much, they're going to be using local vendors and retail and doing their business in town. So, bikes are, is something we want to, want to address, you know, how does that, where do they, how does that work in this plan? It's interesting that the examples you chose are two of my projects, actually. The Sunito Project and the one up on North Montgomery there. And so, I'm, as I look at this, I like the way you step back and you're kind of avoiding the planer look on the horizontal scale, but on the vertical scale, it still seems pretty horizontal to me. I would like to see some lower roof lines. I want to see something break it up, the verticality of it. If you, I could draw a line across your eve line and go from one side all the way to the other, it's pretty consistent. The same thing with your railings and all that. I mean, I'm just throwing these ideas, again, for you to consider and take a look at and see where the creativity might come from, to solve those problems. I think, I think there is an issue with density. I don't mind a higher density. I don't know if nine units is the magic number. I could see more than four, that's for sure. And how is that all integrated? I'm looking, I'm looking forward to see how that might become to a solution, so.
Thank you. Mr. Jagi.
Well, a lot of the comments that the other commissioners are making are comments that I'm in agreement, in agreement with. For instance, this live-work concept is something I've been part of and also have done in Ventura and a few projects there. And it, when it, when it does, it does work, and it does add that pedestrian/business activity, the sidewalks coming in front of the units. It adds an ambiance to the community. It kind of pushes the downtown element from downtown toward Eliso Street and expands that, and I think that's an important thing. I like, I really like the idea of incorporating the incentives for low-income housing off-site. I am also concerned about the density of the project. I do feel it's a little large for the area. And going down there, I tried to visualize myself in that area with that building, you know, standing on the street. And if there is something that could be done, like Steve had mentioned, to kind of incorporate maybe some lower roof lines and courtyards, that made it feel a little bit less large coming at you off the street would be, I think, very helpful. And I had a question about the tree. You said you were going to remove the 48 and bring in two 24-inch trees. Did you mean 24-inch boxes or 24-inch trees?
Well, because you remember it's a...
Because that's a big, huge tree to bring in.
Yeah. Come on up.
Yeah, we wanted to replace it with its equivalent, and the existing tree has a 48-inch diameter trunk.
Right, and you would bring in a 24-inch diameter tree trunk? You would bring a tree that big in?
Well, whatever, we'd bring in the tree that you guys recommended that we had to bring in to replace it, so.
That's a, that's a huge tree. I don't even think you can get a tree that big and get it in there, but, other than that, I think it's, I like the, the parking is an issue on the rear side, too. I'm looking at the cars coming out of the back of the, out of the garage and having to, you know, have a turn radius, and I'm sure you're going to kind of calculate that. Other than that, I like the project. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Mr. Zemelo.
So, I also appreciate the varied front. That was the first thing I was grateful for. When I look at the site and I look at the surrounding area, the design feels a little out of sync with, with the area. When I think of the North Montgomery townhouses, there's a more homogeneous look to them so that they're not sort of sticking out, so you've got both density, and then you have something that's very, you know, that sort of keeps shifting planes. So, that makes it seem even more dense, that there's so much to look at, there's so much going on, really in a neighborhood of, yeah, there's the apartment building, but it's really a neighborhood of cottages and more modest buildings. And so, this feels like it ran away from some other place to come. And I'd like to see something that fits in a little more, with a lot of the suggestions that people have already made, varying roof lines, maybe something a little more homogeneous with the actual design features. I'll also echo the concerns about the parking and the tree and the density. If there is an off-site answer to the affordable housing issue, that seems far more realistic to me than what I know of real estate, and the way that people buy houses and what they think, how they measure value. And I, I guess that's it. Thank you.
Good, thank you. And Commissioner Legowski.
Well, thanks. It was great hearing from the other commissioners. I particularly valued Commissioner Foster's architectural suggestions, because I agree with them almost whole and part. I also appreciate you guys coming before the commission at this stage, rather than us going deep down it and getting to an uncomfortable place. So, it's, I think this is a great opportunity to have a conversation, you know, exactly what we're doing today. I'm going to read a couple of things from, I'm going to extrapolate from the staff report. It says, "Planned development permits are encouraged and expected to produce a comprehensive development of greater quality and imaginative land planning concepts than that normally resulting from more traditional development." So, I found that an interesting point in this. And to that end, I'm going to, I'm going to have to disagree with off-site affordable housing. I don't, I don't agree with that. I think that it, that economic diversity is just as important as cultural diversity in our community, particularly in our downtown area. I feel that pushing the issue off-site to an undefined future time doesn't really equate to the trade-off. I don't feel the trade-off is, in my opinion, appropriate for four more units. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me in that regard. I think we need, furthermore, I stand behind, I think people need to be able to buy houses in Ojai that are affordable, not rent them. I think that's an important thing for the vitality and sustainability and the diversity and the long-term health of the community. So, those are a couple of the more esoteric concerns I had. Couple of the other concerns I had, it said, "The commission may approve a planned development permit only if all the following findings are made." And then it runs through, there's nine findings, I'm sure there's others. And this kind of goes to my part about the density and maybe what some of the other commissioners were talking about. I mean, this is a major, massive entity that's taking place, and point number nine is that there would be no potential significant negative effects upon environmental quality and natural resources that would not be properly mitigated and monitored unless a statement of overriding considerations is adopted by the commission. Now, to that end, I did note on your plans that, under the general project scope, that you did, you know, have a couple comments in there about sustainable features and whatnot. And to that effect, I would just urge you to look maybe more so into LEED for homes, particularly in the multifamily housing. Up in San Francisco, there's an incredible project done, the Bell's Townhomes Project that received LEED Platinum. So, those are just a couple of the comments I had, but I look forward to continuing this process and seeing what you bring back before the commission. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Legowski. So, I will finish things up here. I really liked the plan that you guys came through with. I'm really excited about the idea of having affordable housing downtown. I think this is a great opportunity. You guys seem really sort of forward-thinking and flexible in what you're doing, and we've been trying for years to get, make affordable housing work downtown, and if there's a way to incorporate that into this project, I would be just thrilled to kind of set a precedent for how to do that, because it's been really lacking for a long time. I like the plan that you came up with. I think some of the other comments about varying the heights, you know, varying things vertically as well as horizontally makes a lot of sense. And I really appreciate you guys, appreciate you guys coming in for this concept review, because it gives us a chance to really talk with you and have a kind of a dialogue about it, rather than, you know, you putting up a bunch of plans that you put a lot of work into, and then we're saying, well, nope, can't do it. So, I appreciate you working with us on this, and I think it's an exciting site, it's a great location, and I think we can come up with something really great for it. So, I look forward to seeing your next submission in terms of what you're doing. So, thank you. We're going to move on to Item Three, which is neighborhood planning, and we will hear from staff on this.
Thank, thank you, Chair, and members of the board. As you know, we included $30,000 in the budget this year at the request of the Planning Commission for neighborhood planning. We had also included some money in the budget for a visioning process that the council was interested in, and when the council discussed that several weeks ago, they felt that combining those two efforts, the neighborhood planning and the visioning, made a lot of sense, because both were very tight budgets in terms of what kind of scope of work we'd want to see done, and they're both very similar processes. So, let me share a little bit my thoughts about what neighborhood planning is and where you might want to go with the, with the first phase of that. The general plan and the zoning are, are both very general regulations, meaning that from 30,000 feet, when you look down on the town, all the residents... 30,000 feet, when you look down on the town, all the residential areas look pretty much the same. And our general plan designations and our zoning designations don't have a whole lot of variance in terms of what might apply in one neighborhood and what might apply in another neighborhood. But in reality, different parts of the town developed at different times and developed in different ways and have very different characters. So, I think that for quite some time, going all the way back to the Urban Forest Program, the Planning Commission and the city have recognized that we have trouble trying to fit all the pegs into a square hole and that we need to come up with some different shapes that address the different characteristics of different neighborhoods. And so, neighborhood planning is a much more specific type of planning, and it would be broken down neighborhood by neighborhood in terms of what the standards might be. It's also a huge undertaking, a massive undertaking. It's not something that can be done, I don't think, in one phase or one year. It's something that's going to have to be broken into phases and done over a period of years. And so, the question that we are trying to initiate discussion on with this RFP is what does the first phase look like? And our constraints are, we have about $50,000 available to us, and we'd like whatever the product is that comes out of this to be done within a year or maybe 18 months. And we'd like it to be a product that establishes a strong base, something that can be used in the current time once it's developed, but also something that can be built on with future phases. So, one thought that we had is to start with the streets and the front yards. And that's for a couple of reasons. There's, in addition to the interest in neighborhood planning, there's been a lot of interest and emphasis on complete streets. Yet, as things stand right now, and as you know from looking at the plans that come before you, we don't know what a street should be, what it should look like. We don't have a standard, even on a citywide basis, but especially on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis. And I think the Complete Streets Group has really fleshed out the concept that the streets look different depending on where they are and how they function and how they work together. The other thing about streets is that we are going, we already are, and we're going to continue to be investing a lot of money in improving our streets. So, if we had a complete streets layer in this first phase in 12 to 18 months, that would be very useful to the Public Works Department as they look at what street improvements we're going to make and how we're going to use the money that we're aggressively setting aside for streets. So, that was a reason for thinking about streets as maybe part of the first phase. The other part of the first phase that we thought about was the front yard. And there's a couple of reasons for that. First of all, the front yard and the street are fairly closely tied together. But secondly, at least over the period of time that I've been here, many of the controversial issues that the Planning Commission and the City Council faced have had to do with walls, hedges, fences, and that kind of thing that occur in the front of the property. So, you know, the street and the front yard tie together, and they also address some pretty current issues. And our thought process in at least developing this first draft was if we could get a much better handle on that piece as the first layer, that would be a great foundation. It would be usable. And then we could come back in future years, and we certainly anticipate budgeting money in future years, and start addressing other issues which are also very important, such as building envelope, height, setback, and all those kinds of things. So, as things stand right now, we have money in the budget. We have a draft RFP for you to review and comment on. The City Council also wants to review and comment on the RFP before it goes out. Once we've all settled on what the RFP is going to ask for, we will then circulate it to a fairly broad number of planning firms and hope to, by doing that, bring their ideas to the table. So, I think, you know, there's quite a bit of flexibility in the RFP the way it's written right now. And you could make it more specific, or you could leave it more general like it is. But I think each planning firm is going to take a look at that and, based on their experience in doing this kind of work, come back with their own ideas about what approach might work well for this. Whatever approach it is, there's a very strong desire to see public input, and not just public input from the usual cast of characters. Of course, they will be involved, but also public input from those who maybe don't often participate in municipal affairs. So, we've also tried in this to signal to the planning firms that we'd like to see what they would suggest we do to bring out people that maybe haven't necessarily been involved but should be involved as we make some very critical decisions about their neighborhood. So, the process that we envision is the RFP is approved, it's issued, we get the responses. We then would cull through those and find out who the finalists are before making a final decision. And we hope we can do all that by the time fall rolls around and begin the first phase of neighborhood planning finally in the fall. So, that's my overview, and I'd be glad to answer any questions, but more importantly, hear your comments.
Good. Thank you. Questions or comments?
Well, I'd like to say thank you. This is so exciting that we're moving forward with this. And I looked at the project objectives, and I think they're good. And like you said, we may want to dial in on what that is a little bit more. Something that we did talk about in Complete Streets was, and Greg Grant, our Public Works Director, has been an active participant in this, in Complete Streets, and that would be to have a public workshop or charrette for, we always like to call them like a pilot project, but it could be like our first planning process with a neighborhood. And it may, we may want to look at a neighborhood that we would call an easy neighborhood because it's not overly complex being the first one. And the neighborhood, based on looking at these descriptions, we may want to have more than one neighborhood at a time to expedite the process. In other words, I don't think that we'd have to go through every single neighborhood and corridor individually. We could probably group because of similar characteristics. But I would like to see that happen. I think, you know, the public would actually then see, hey, they're getting to be involved, even if it was just that pilot project, and then know that we had the format set up for future neighborhoods to move forward.
Thanks. Other comments, questions?
I'd like to say, I think also, as Kathy said, the, having charrettes and the public involved is very important. I've been working on a project in Ventura, and we had three, for the project, we had three charrettes. And, you know, after the first one, we went back to the table and dealt with those issues. Then we had another charrette and brought those out. And then, you know, the other comments would come back. And took three charrettes to actually iron out all the basic problems or questions that the public had. And I agree with Kathy of, you know, finding similar neighborhoods and putting them together because it'll just make it much easier. And, you know, and then just looking at also the areas where we most, you know, with the money that's available, where we're going to most need it and where it should be put to the most use. So, thank you.
Thanks. Other comments, questions? Don't jump in.
Just because I'm active with the Complete Streets, I wanted to say that what we looked at, or something that I've been looking at, is that the neighborhood planning has, it's the public side, which is, you know, the public realm, the street, the sidewalks, what have you, the street trees. Then there's the private side. And what we started to do in Complete Streets was just kind of define, okay, what categories would be on the public and the private side? And so, that's something that I'm willing to hand my notes over, and maybe the consultant would want to see that. I'm sure they'd have, you know, more ideas, and it may be a better way to organize it. But it's just a way of organizing the system so that we're not leaving anything out. And then another thing that we're doing in Complete Streets, what we'll be doing, is we're going to be working on putting together a neighborhood planning checklist, I always like to say, if you will, for this neighborhood planning so that when we do go to the workshops or charrettes, maybe ahead of time, you know, the public can actually look at this checklist. And there'll be an area at the bottom where they can add more, something we may have missed, but just to make sure that nothing gets left out. And there may be some items that don't apply, depending on the neighborhood. But it's just a way of organizing and, once again, you know, hopefully not leaving anything out. So, that's something we're going to be doing, and our subcommittee is working on that. So, any way that we can help in this process, we're available.
Thank you. Others? I want to say, I want to echo the thanks for going forward with this because I think it's a really exciting process. And I like the idea of kind of keeping the RFP very general, like you were saying, just to kind of see what kind of ideas people come up with because it's, I haven't ever seen anything that actually worked. So, it'd be nice to have something come through.
We're going to make sure this works.
I think the other thing about this, too, is, I mean, we've had this forest management plan in front of us for several years, but I don't know that the general public is aware of kind of how we're visualizing these neighborhoods. And I think part of this process would be just to make that, make people aware of that process. And, you know, everybody knows they live in a neighborhood, but they may not be aware that we see that where they live is a separate neighborhood.
I'll just make a comment about that because I worked on that project, on the Community Forest Management Plan. So, basically, how we ended up identifying the neighborhoods was, some of it was obvious. You could tell that it was a development that happened at a certain time period, like, say, in Golden West or the area over behind Vaughn's. And what we ended up doing was, I mean, our approach was looking at the community forest, so that was street trees on the public right-of-way. So, we actually went out and looked at what was happening there. So, how wide was the street? Was there a place to plant a tree? Was there a sidewalk or not? So, we gathered all that information, and that's kind of how we ended up coming up with this, these neighborhoods. It was pretty obvious. And like I said, some of them are similar, and they may be, you know, one on this end of town and one on the other. But when it comes to the workshop town, we may be able to group them together. I think it'd be just more time and cost efficient. But that's generally how we ended up with this. And actually, one thing I just wanted to add, I happened to bump into someone on the Arts Commission a couple, well, maybe about a month ago. And she said, "Oh, I want to drive you around town because we want to put art pieces to divide the neighborhoods." And then I looked at her, and I said, "Oh, how interesting." And I said, "But I don't think I'd use the word 'divide.' What about gateways into the neighborhoods?" She goes, "Oh, perfect." But part of Complete Streets includes like public art, and it could be side amenities. It could be if there's a vacant lot, maybe, you know, it's a parklet or something else. But I think there's a lot of potential with this to add to what we've been talking about for all these years, about making it more walkable and more, bringing out that social component to our city. So, if anyone has any questions on the neighborhoods, at any time, please feel free to ask me. But that's generally how we derived at the neighborhoods.
Thanks. Any other comments, questions? This isn't really a public hearing, it's just kind of an informational thing, but is there anybody in the public that wanted to speak on this? Mr. Miley.
Bill Miley from North Signal Street. I would like to identify myself as one of the city manager's characters. And I, too, would like to have more people than the usual characters. I'm honored to be, you know, considered the... I just looked at Zone 9 or whatever you call those, which is where I live, and the annual goal is eight trees per year. I think that's really great. I planted five in the last two months, so I'm helping meet the goal, right? When Mr. Merk talked about the public understanding of what's happening and probably not, I think that's a really good point. So, I raised, here's the question you might look at. Why should the public participate? Why should people who live in the neighborhood participate when you call a meeting? I can come up with some answers, but I think that's a rhetorical question that we ought to think about. Why should people come out of their houses and go to a meeting to talk about the neighborhood when they hardly know their neighbors? Oh, wow, I've lived here 20 years. I've lived here 20 years, you know? Gee, I didn't know that. It was nice to meet you. That may happen, and that's probably a good thing.
It could be dangerous.
So, we need to maybe reward them in some way for coming, like donuts, no, cheese and crackers and things like that. Okay. The visualization process, I think, maybe I got that idea from this Nolan, of being able to visualize what your neighborhood might look like 10 years from now or five years from now, or what you'd like it to look like. Where was I? I was driving someplace in Ohio, and I was going by this nice street, and suddenly there was a house, and there were lots of weeds about three feet tall bordered by a little shrubs that came around, right? Oh, it's over on Villanova Road. It's close to, as you get to the west end of Villanova Road, there's this nice house with nice weeds growing all over. I don't know what the neighbors think of that. Maybe they like it. But that's part, I think, of the visualization process. And I would suggest that North Signal Street is a good example of one of the areas you might not want to work on first because it's full of all sorts of violations of city rules. Walls that are built in city property without permits that you turned down and the City Council looked at brand-new and said, "Okay," because the wall next to it years ago was built on city property and nobody knew anything about it? We have gates going up all over the place, walls going up all over the place, houses that were going to be lived in, and people told you they were going to live in them, but they're not living in them. They're visiting on the weekends or having friends or renting them out as vacation homes. So, I think that's a really, this neighborhood thing is a really good idea. And I like the public art thing. That's a really good idea. And I would suggest that maybe one example, which may not be the best, is the old car on a big piece of property at Villanova Road where it intersects Highway 30, 133, 150, I guess it is, with the tree going through it. And we could have antique cars throughout the city, you know, and the trees going through it, and we'd meet both needs. I don't know how that got approved, but that's not what I would like to have as the entrance to my city. And boy, other things are happening there that are really interesting. They're spending a lot of money with this huge fence. It's got these curves that are all over the place. Interesting. Okay. Anyway, I like the idea, and I do think that the focus should be on why should people participate and how to get them out. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. That house, by the way, is in the county. It's outside the city limits.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
That house with the car in the front yard?
Yeah.
That's in the county. It's not in the...
It's in the county?
Yeah, it's outside the city limits.
Oh.
So, we have no control.
County planning.
We just look at it as we go by.
Not too good.
Appreciate it, appreciate it.
We better start going to the County Planning Commission.
Yeah, go to the MAC meeting and tell them. All right. Thank you. That concludes all of our discussion items, and we're moving on to our informational items, the director's report. Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor, please come up and...
Before we leave this topic, I did want to mention that I was fascinated with the report that was put together on the neighborhoods. The first thing, after I read the staff report, the first thing I did was to rush to my neighborhood to see where it was. So, I think early on, I would like to see us make this initial neighborhood maps or the neighborhoods available to the public, to get the public thinking about it. Maybe we can put something on our website. You know, if you're interested in looking at this, call us or come down and pick it up. But... But I think it would have a really positive impact, so I'd like to see us get it out there early on, so that our citizens can be part of the development part of the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Strobel. I would love to see a whole GIS thing where you could just put a layer in there that shows the neighborhood, and you click on it, and it shows you the characteristics and...
Eventually, one step at a time.
Yeah, I just think that'd be fantastic. All right, our director's report. Thank you, Mr. Clark, appreciate you coming in.
Okay, the first item would be the director decisions, and we just have two. Once again, we have an abandoned property registration at 409, is that?
Valerio.
Valerio, thank you.
People pronounce it different ways.
Oh, do they? Okay.
Some people say Valley Rio.
And then the second one is a TUP, a temporary use permit at the Healing Center, 107 North Ventura, and that's for outdoor workshops and classes. That was approved for this month, would be June 21st through the 22nd. And then moving on, we have our list of code enforcement activities. And I would just like to point out, for information purposes, that on the Pauline Street, regarding the lighting complaint, we are just, I guess everybody sort of knows that that, even though we're supposed to keep it confidential, that some of those issues have been with the Emerald Guana, and we are having neighborhood meetings on that, so reaching out and trying to come to some type of consensus. And we'll be having another one on, help me, Sherri, July 7th at 6 o'clock, and so it's going to go out to all the neighbors and published in the newspaper. And this has nothing to do with any specific code complaints, so we can talk about it, but it's to invite the neighbors to come out and discuss issues and concerns with that interface between the motel and the residential neighborhood. So I point that out. And other than that, we continue to be fairly active with code enforcement, and really seen a big uptick in the number of issues we have. And moving on, just moving on, that we have, I guess we've all decided to cancel the July 2nd meeting, since, I don't believe Sherri, we don't have anything on that meeting, do we? And so we probably would like you to take some action on that, to cancel that meeting. And then on July 16th, we'll be working on the landscape ordinance, provided that, I see you're going for the button, so go ahead.
I was going to ask if we could continue to the August 6th meeting, if that's possible.
Certainly. So we will be moving that to August 6th, you said? Okay. And we'd be taking the time extension for the Hilgers Recreational Vehicle Park, that was approved back in December, and unfortunately, the time that permit is active is only six months. I think it's the CUP, and Sherri, correct me if I'm wrong, but the design review permit runs for a year, the CUP runs for six months. They don't run concurrently to the same length of time, and so he's running near expiration on that, which would be, I guess, today, would be, because it was approved in December 18th, and so he's already applied for his extension, which then stays the clock, and then he'll be asking you for that on that day. And then we have our usual list of other applications that we're working on, and I'm open to answer any questions you might have, what?
That code enforcement number CE 13118 is going to be on the 16th.
CE what?
118, 13118.
Oh, 13118. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, she's right.
We just, we didn't find out till after this was already...
So just so that, just for your information, there was, this is the mob shop, and they had a condition on their previous approval to plant trees. They also had a previous, a condition on the previous approval to put in some street improvements. The street improvements were deferred due to lack of funds and give the opportunity for the business to get active and be able to provide the funds to do those. I think it's removing some curb cuts, et cetera, some things like that. So there was, so the issue is whether or not that was also intended to defer the planting of the trees in the sidewalk, because of course that would require him to cut into the sidewalk, et cetera. So that's what's coming before you on that. So clarify that condition and possibly ask for a deferral. If it isn't, if the determination is that it's not, was not deferred, then he'll be asking for a deferral of planting those trees with that. And so I guess that's it, that's all I have.
All right. We have our...
Question from the audience.
A question from the audience, Mr. Miley, come right up. This never happens.
Bill Miley, I would just like to compliment the administrative staff on the code enforcement chart. I remember in the past months, I believe the resolution of some of those issues, that was kind of blank, and I really was pleased to see anonymous, but resolution comments or process comments in that column. It made me understand what was going on and how the process was being done, and how the city was working to make those things better. So I want to compliment you for putting that in there.
I would say that that's a chart that Sherri maintains, and so you might want to direct your comments to Sherri.
I would like to compliment Ms. Herblock for that.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. All right, our Planning Commission Subcommittee reports. We have more than one, or just one? We just have one active Subcommittee?
Yeah, well, actually, the Complete Streets and Lawrence and I are working on the landscape standards, so I don't really have anything to report. I reported last time we had our meeting at the beginning of the month. Other than, I always encourage and invite the public to join us. We meet the first Wednesday of the month here at City Hall in the conference room from 2:30 to 4:30. And pretty much discussed a little bit about Complete Streets in the neighborhood planning, so...
I have a question about Subcommittee's. How are they formed, and who forms them, and...
They're pretty informal.
Okay.
We can't have more than three commissioners on a Subcommittee, but any three commissioners can be on a Subcommittee, so. We have landscaping, we have the Complete Streets. Do we have anything else? That's all we have working right now.
In the past, we did it with the, we've had some short-term ones for the building code. We did one, yeah, it went for several months. The Complete Streets is kind of, is ongoing, and the landscape one should be, you know, wrapped up in the next couple of months. But the, actually, how they started was, city council directed the Planning Commission to form the Subcommittee's to work on ordinances for one of almost Complete Streets' state ordinance, and the same thing with the water and landscape ordinances. So that's how they were generated initially.
Thank you.
Thanks. One of the things that was mentioned earlier was that we need to have a motion to cancel our July 2nd meeting, so I would be open to a motion for that.
Let me try it for the first time. Make a motion to cancel our July 2nd meeting.
Thank you. Do we have a second for that?
I will second it.
All right. Any discussion? Can we have a roll call, please? Really? Oh, come on, Chester went through making a motion and everything.
Learned somehow.
All right, all in favor of Chester's motion? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Our last item is our city council liaison, Mayor Carol Carlin Strobel.
And you know, you're going to have to start reprimanding me. I spend so much time in this building that I don't think I have to tell you who I am, and that's just not true. So I'm going to start off. I'm Carlin Strobel, Area 10, City North. I think that's the name of my neighborhood. At any rate, I wanted to mention something that happened a couple of weeks ago, and that is, we had a dead tree that was on Valley Rio. We had a dead tree, private property, at the back of the lot. A renter on the property, the owner in Vancouver, Washington. Ruben went out, looked at it, and said, the tree looks dead to me. But again, private property, that's what I want you to remember. Mr. Clark, I spoke with Mr. Clark, I'm sure Mr. Clark started speaking with Greg Grant. The result I'm very pleased with, and that is, that the tree had wires going through it, two electrical wires. Tree's dead, wires going through it, fire hazard. Southern California Edison inspected the tree, removed the top half of the tree. The homeowner will be removing the bottom half of the tree, and so that hazard is removed. Now, what this generated was, we need to tighten up our ordinance to include dead or hazardous trees or whatever on private property. And so that's, from this tree, you'll see that coming before you, and I think it's really important. It's something that we tend to kind of go past, because, oh, it's private property, we don't have to think about that. But if it's a public hazard, and we know, then I feel that we have a responsibility to address it. I don't recall if there's anything coming up on our council meeting specific for the Planning Commission transient rentals, so that'll probably be coming back to you. My head is still on budget. So that's all I have. Do you have any questions for me? Make them easy.
I'd like to thank the council for the work they're doing with Public Works, getting the streets repaved. I think it's fantastic. It looks like a really good program, too. I like the idea of just doing a little bit every year.
And I'll pass that on to Mr. Grant. He is, he's doing an outstanding job. And of course, Sherri is doing an outstanding job, right, Bill?
Goes without saying.
Oh, and the last thing, and this is actually more for Bill behind me, but I'm not going to turn around, is I'd like us to keep in mind that the city owns the property on Montgomery Street, where there were four units, and so as we're thinking about affordable housing off-site, I'd like us to remember that Montgomery Street property that had four units, because I personally would prefer to have pocket projects, as opposed to one large affordable housing project. And so maybe we can keep that in mind, and maybe we can gear some of the funds to, I'd love to have it as a project, I mean, a, what is it?
Demonstration?
Yes, thank you, demonstration project. So keep in mind, we own, the city owns the property on Montgomery, and there may be other instances where off-site affordable housing funds could be redirected, and that's all.
Thank you, Mayor Strobel. Any other business for this commission? Our meeting is adjourned.